All right, so I'd like to call to order tonight's regularly scheduled city commission meeting for April 5th, 2021. Can we get a roll call, please, Tabitha?
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis is absent. Commissioner Vatby is absent. Commissioner Wolf is present.
Thank you. So tonight for invocation, we have Pastor Mark Somerville with Family Worship Center.
Shalit Craig, our gracious Father, again tonight, we come to you at the opening of the city council meeting. We come to you asking for wisdom, for guidance, and for direction on the meeting tonight. We thank you for our leaders in our community, and we just pray your hand a blessing upon them in all they do. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we have a couple of proclamations tonight. The first one is the Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas the city of Eldorado is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws, and whereas the fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws, and whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. I, Bill Young, mayor of the city of Eldorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing and practices throughout the city dated this fifth day of April, 2021. And we have a second proclamation tonight. I get to read a lot. As some of you know, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the children are the key, whereas the children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and equality of life, and while children are our most vulnerable resource, they are also our most valuable resource. Whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, hoping to secure the future of this state and of our nation. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, mayor of the city of Eldorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April, 2021, as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the city of Eldorado, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join in this observance by resolving to end child abuse and by making ourselves aware of child abuse and the ways in which it affects our community. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Eldorado, Kansas, to be affixed this fifth day of April, 2021. Okay. First, next on the agenda is personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling city clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100. By 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting, presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken. And tonight, for personal appearance, we have Emily Canal, who is the director of Eldorado Main Street, to deliver the Eldorado Main Street Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to give this annual report for Eldorado Main Street. Joining me tonight, giving this report, will be our board president, Leon Lieberman, and vice president Jeffrey Christensen. Just as a quick review, you all have the report of imprint. All of Main Street's work is determined by two special documents. One is our mission statement, and the other is the memorandum of understanding that Eldorado Main Street has with the city of Eldorado. From those two documents, every year, 2020 included, we decide on work plans. We have a master work plan sheet. You have it in your envelope. That is what it looks like. It's organized under the four Main Street principles of organization, promotion, economic vitalization, and design. All of those work plans are bound by the boundaries of the downtown district of Eldorado, the heart of the community, and we just included those boundaries for those people who may not know exactly where they are. The yellow boundary is the boundary of the downtown, and the interior boundary is the boundary of the historic district. So given that review, I'd like to have Jeffrey come up.
Hi, I'm Jeff Christensen. So what I'm going to cover tonight is really just an overview of the MOU as we understand it and how we met that during 2020. So the first item of the MOU is assisting investors and building owners in rehabbing and preserving buildings through grants, loans, and facilitating real estate transfers. We've done that a couple different ways throughout 2020. One was that we saw the completion of the Pierce Building, which is now the Wilkinson Building. We facilitated the title transfer of the vacant lot on West Central that then resulted in construction and completion of the Edward Jones offices sitting there now. We helped facilitate the relocation of Bruco and Dilly Delly from the building 142 to their current location. Throughout that process, we also assisted in COVID relief counseling with 50 different businesses. Whenever COVID hit, there was a lot of different grants, relief programs, and loans that were available to business owners. It was kind of confusing. So working with Main Street, Inc., and the Chamber of Commerce, we helped facilitate, helped them understand, better understand what those programs were so they could best decide what program best suited them, and we helped secure grants for 12 different businesses through that process. The second item of the MOU is making incentives without walls, loan availables through the district. So the IWW loans that we have are a unique program that's provided through Main Street. They're funds that come from our national office down to us. We're then able to make 0% loans to different businesses for whatever their needs might be, whether that's rehabilitation, or construction, or costs, whatever that is. And as those loans are repaid back, those funds stay within Eldorado Main Street, and we're able to re-lend that money back out. So it's a very neat program that we have just specific to Main Street, and so far, we've got $95,000 in revolving funds since 2015. The third item of the MOU is offering facade grants to property owners, as well as advising them and making sure that their buildings and their change their buildings meet the prescribed historical design standards and specifications. So in 2020, we have a new $2,000 facade grant that was awarded to us. We helped Bruco and Dilly Delly with that back area and that garden outside there, as well as landscaping and seating. We have five grants within the district for a total of $11,000 since 2015, and we currently have two, I think there's a third one pending for the remaining part of that fund of $3,000. One of the big things that we focus on at Main Street is assisting in attracting business owners and investors to the district. So we recognize that we needed to be more interactive with what the public, our messaging with the public, so we formed a media management group to help improve that communication. We redesigned and updated our website, so it's more pertinent. People want to come here and actually find resources and see what we have going on. We led the second season of Thankful Thursday, which helped support those businesses from June to October, and we had over 25 businesses participate. This next slide is something I'm really excited about, because in 2020, we welcomed a lot of new businesses to the downtown district. There's over 18 that are listed here. I don't know if that's an inclusive, all-inclusive list, but to think about 2020 and the challenges that it brought to retail and business owners just throughout the nation, for a district like downtown Eldorado to bring in almost 20 businesses is a pretty amazing thing. The second, or the next MOU item is to help facilitate the development, maintenance, and promotion of the downtown art scape. So we have a $2,500 grant that helps keep up the maintenance on these 16 different sculptures throughout the downtown area. We have a draft that we submitted for a public art and mural policy. We began planning with the city manager on interactive mural that's going to go behind the building on First Street there, where the bakery 177, the Midwest hearing aid is going to go. So in addition to that, we're also, one of our charges is promote the district through presenting and conducting activities in our historical building tour, events like parade down Main Street, trick-or-treat down Main Street, or equivalent types of events. 2020 obviously threw us some curveballs there. So one of the things that we're excited about is that through a grant that Union Pacific gave us, we were able to produce three different videos that highlighted some kind of staples in our downtown area, Charlie's, Robbins, and Walters, to talk about their businesses. Those videos ran from September to December of last year, and we reached a little over 41,000 people with those videos, and about 7,500 people watched them all the way through. Because of COVID, we had to cancel trick-or-treat down Main Street. We just had concerns there of health and making sure that we weren't spreading things. We also had to cancel the parade, Santa Claus at Charlie's. So we had a lot of things that we had to cancel because of the environment that we were in. But I think we pivoted well because we still had the first annual downtown Christmas light. So about 23 different businesses participated and kind of helped keep the festivities going in our downtown district. The city played a huge role in helping participate and make sure that the poles were decorated and going that way. So there was a huge support that way. The other item on our MOU is maintaining the veteran banner program. So this is kind of a neat program that highlights the veterans of the city. We've increased those number of banners from 37 to 46. We flew those during the downtown month. Evergy is a great partner with us to help get those banners up and on the poles. And then we have started adding the stories of those veterans to our website as well, so there's more interaction, more involvement that way as well. We work with the city staff to maintain businesses and help ensure that the historic downtown district provides a quality experience to those visiting. So we have a lot of core volunteers that are really, really competent volunteers that work closely with the city staff. We have funds requested for a plantar replacement program, and we've continued to work on the district signage. The other thing that I think that reflects the vitality of the downtown district is the occupancy rates of the apartments that are down there. We think it's close to 93% occupancy, which I think is a huge testament to the vitality of our downtown district. Late last year, we started Main Street's Downtown Master Plan. We got a steering committee formed. We developed a survey. Those surveys went out this year and are being compiled, and that data is being tagged, so that way we have a good direction from our business owners and people that are living and working downtown, as far as what they would like to have us do as well.
Well, when you see me, you know you're near the end, okay? One of the things he mentioned was the volunteers, and we thought it was very important to make you guys aware of the number of hours and the number of volunteer amount of work that's done. It's just unbelievable and the things they've helped us in. And if you think of all the things that have gone on with the COVID virus and everything, and we hate to keep harping on that, but unfortunately, it's a, it's part of life. We're continuing to move forward. We've got a lot of things planned for the future. One of the things we're talking about here is still trying to revitalize downtown to make Eldorado the best place to live. What's interesting is we went through and we looked at the building permits that were done for just the downtown district area, if you remember the Mathews Show, and you'll notice that in 215, there were 17 of them. One of those was for a million bucks for the Y. In 2016, 19, we built a bank downtown. So you see, there it goes down after that, but then you see we picked it back up. Nine, and then seven in 2020. More to come in 2021. We can only do this with you guys' help and the help of the community, our continued interest in wanting to be involved. Any questions we can answer for you?
Yeah, it's great information. You guys have provided us a lot of information. I appreciate it. And, I mean, they may have some comments, but I just want to say this. I think it is a testament, the amount of, I think the amount of traffic that we were able to keep downtown and the work, and a lot of that's with the work that you all have done and Main Street have done, and Emily, the work that you've done through 2020. And to see the number of businesses that have moved downtown in a time when we've had businesses across this country and even in our community really struggling, to see those new businesses come up, I think that speaks a lot to our community, and it speaks a lot to the support that they get downtown. So I appreciate that.
We did find one interesting statistic I was supposed to leave you with on that. The average community in 2020 lost businesses downtown. And here we've gained that many. That says a lot about Eldorado and the things that go on. So thank you for letting us come.
Thank you. Get back in here. Thank you again. Next on the agenda is public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction, the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do we have anyone here tonight that wants to make public comment? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. On our consent agenda tonight is the approval of the city commission minutes from March 15th, 2021, and special city commission minutes from March 10th, 2021, and the approval of cereal malt beverage license for IAATT Dining LLC, which is Taco Tico, located at 2521 West Central. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second?
If we have a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose same sign. Motion carries. We don't have anything for old business, so tonight, starting new business, which is agenda item number 12, we're going to jump into liquor tax allocations. And I think Tabitha might have some things, but I wanted to mention that we've got three this year. Had three requests that we're able to fill this year. Scarf, Family Life Center, and Communities and Schools. I think that we have representees here from each of those groups. Would you guys like to, do you have any comments? Would you all like to make any comments about, about what you do with your, with your organizations?
Yeah, if I can just briefly speak. My name's Dusty Buhl, and I'm the CEO of Sunlight Children's Services, which was formerly Scarf. We went through a rebranding this year. 2020 has, and I'm sure you're going to hear it throughout the night, has been very tough for us. We saw a drop in kids. We, and that's money that we have fee for service, and so when we don't see kids, we don't get paid. To be very honest and transparent, if it wasn't for the PPP loan and the federal government, I don't know that we would still be here and our doors would still be open. It got that bad, and there's several things that contribute to that. But I just want to make you aware and say thank you for reading that proclamation. But when these kids are not in school, nobody lays eyes on these kids. When we're beating the drum to say isolate, 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 what happens is, is that that's great for us in this room, but for these kids that are stuck at home getting beat or sexually assaulted every single day, they're isolating away from teachers, away from family, away from everybody that can see them and see their bruises and see their marks and to see them on a daily basis. So they have to sit there in this home for months and months in pure hell. And I don't think anybody acknowledges that and sees that. And through that proclamation, you say that we give kids a voice, and we, and we as a community need to give kids a voice. That's what we do at our CAC. We allow our kids to have their voice, to become, take the power in that abusive relationship. We allow those kids and give those kids that power to do so. So that's why it's so important to us. We made an investment in Eldorado by purchasing, building here, renovating a building here, 205 East 12th, which used to be the dental office. So we're here. We're committed to be here. We're committed to having our doors open. Our staff was in our building every single day this year, and even through the slow days, you never know who's coming in. And I just want to leave you with the fact that we're doing this work. My staff is doing this work. We see it every single day. But just in the last three weeks, some of the cases that we've seen are a little girl that came to us, this two-years-old, with a broken back, a break right below her kneecap, and two broken fingers. And the back was healing, and nobody ever asked the question, or the mom had a good enough excuse of why the back was broken to begin with, and we didn't see this girl until the knee was broken, the fingers were broke, and the back was healing. And so that's the child that we had to deal with. Our staff had to change those diapers of a two-year-old with a broken back. We had a girl two weeks ago that had a miscarriage while she was in our home. Obviously, it's nothing that our staff could have prevented or controlled, but the father of that child was her father. And that's the kids that we're serving. And then finally, we had a three-year-old girl, very recently, from, from our home county, that we got her, and she was a victim of abuse. And while she was with us, she found out by a phone call that her four-month-old brother, who was also a victim of abuse, didn't make it out of the hospital. And so after loving on his brother for four months of his life and having her life changed in a profound way, it was all ripped away from her because of a parent that was an abuser of this child. The stuff, it doesn't have a socioeconomic level attached to it. It doesn't have a geographic area. It can happen anywhere. It has happened anywhere. And I just want you to know that the decisions that you guys make and the money that we use to fund our services is a matter of life and death sometimes. And I just appreciate you guys and your support and your continued support over the years for, for what we do.
Thank you very much. We got Family Life Center, or whoever, or Communities and Schools. Whoever make it up here first.
I'm Darla Carter, and I'm the executive director of the Family Life Center Safe House. Through the whole pandemic, we have been extremely busy, not so much, well, we have been busy in shelter, but we haven't had the amount of clients in shelter as we've had in the past because we've had to social distance them. So we've had, if we have one person in a bedroom, we couldn't put anybody else in them because of not being able to share bedrooms. So, but we have been full through all of this. Our main busyness has been with protection orders. When all of the pandemic started, the courthouse closed, and they said, you need to find a way to do the protection orders. So through many brainstorming, because we could not go into the courthouse anymore, we finally had to let them into the safe house to do the protection orders. So we've been on the front lines through all of this with clients coming in, doing protection orders, and we fax them over, let the judges review them, and they fax them back. And then the final orders have been, they've come back into the safe house to do all of those meetings by Zoom. The numbers just keep growing with the protection orders. So we're finally, after a year, going to be able to get back into the courthouse to do the protection orders. So that is a blessing. We have, we started with a grant. This is our first year with, well, it's not our first year with the ESG grant, but it's our first year that we've got rapid rehousing through it. The ESG grant comes down through the city, it's administered, and then it comes to us. It's a housing grant, and it pays for all of the shelter, but our rapid rehousing money allows us to put victims and their children into their own housing. So we've been able to, once they move out of shelter, we've been able to pay for their rent and their deposit, and we can pay up to three to six months of their rent. So that's been a blessing, so get them back on their feet and be able to go on with their lives. We've had a few other grants to be able to pay some back utilities, so that's helped them also. It's just like Dusty was saying, this is not, this abuse is not just any that's all just social income or anything. It comes in all different shapes and sizes. So you can have the best of the families, and, and they have abuse too, whether it's down to the low income or to the high income. We've seen it all. And so any money that you support us with is always very, very welcome, and we really, really appreciate all the support you have given us over the past years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Communities and Schools.
Hi, Janelle Martin with Communities and Schools of Mid-America, and I just wanted to come here tonight and thank you all for your funding that you supported us with last year, and thank you also for your consideration for funding for this year. And it's so important to have community partners like yourselves to help allow us to work in the schools, work with students and families, to provide some really valuable services for them, to keep students engaged in learning and making progress towards what they want to be in life to meet those goals. So thank you.
Okay, I'm Randy Just. I'm actually here at the middle school, and for those of you, a few of you know that I was a park ranger here for about 20 years, and you say, how do you get to a middle school from being a park ranger? My wife said I was highly qualified because I had the mentality of a sixth grader. So just wanted to let you know that she says I'm highly qualified for that. So here we go. Actually, this is my fifth year with Communities and Schools, and when I saw this position come open, I said, I think I would like to do that. And it's a position that I am labeled as a site coordinator, which means nothing to most kids. What means something to those kids is somebody who will listen to them, somebody who will help them, whatever the case is, somebody who will see that they maybe have some food for the weekend, whatever the case is. I'm there to help them get over hurdles and barriers to succeed. So that's what I do, and that encompasses many, many activities. I have just a few slides, and I'll go through them quickly. But I think you can remember and also maybe engage, just familiarize yourself just a little bit more. I was grabbing the microphone, no big deal. And if I do this, let's see if I can get it going here where you can see it. Hey, there's the focus slide. I usually bring kids in and have them look at this and say, okay, after their eighth grade year, when they look at this, I say, which one's different? If they can't tell me, they go back to sixth grade. My first year, this is a little fuzzy, so it's not your glasses. My first year, what is on that trailer, there's two mattresses. They said, you need to go and help this child out. They have, they're sleeping on the floor. And I said, no, I'm not here in Eldorado. And sure enough, they were sleeping on the floor. A sixth-grade girl and a sibling, and I went and we got mattresses for them. We partnered up, and it was an interesting thing that I thought after the girl left the, the middle school, I was kind of out of the picture. Well, I was downtown not too long ago, and this girl has a mask on, and she says, Mr. Just, do you remember me? And I'm going, I don't have a clue, you know? And just pulled her mask down, and I said, oh, yeah. And she goes, you helped me get that bed when I was in middle school. And I said, wow, you know, how's work going and all that? She goes, I'm accepted into a college. She goes, I have to work here more hours. I may not graduate. I'm helping my grandma buy a bed so I can have a bed. And I gave her mine, and I went, holy cow. So guess what? We got her another bed. So kids remember. We have partners downtown, just like you all. We go, I help get glasses, which is a really neat deal, because sometimes kids just won't admit they need those glasses. I worked with these guys my first year. I said, okay, if you'll get your grades up, I'll take you out to the lake about once a week while the weather's nice, and if you don't have your grades up, we're not going. And they got their grades up. And so it was fun to be out there and watch these kids just explore. I had no agenda. We just got to have fun. And they don't have dads, you know? It's something for them to do that nobody takes them out there to do. It was extra, but it was fun for me. That was my old stomping grounds anyway. So then I told them not to litter. So anyway, kept them, kept them going, and they, they had a ball, and they're, they're doing good. Of course, we go with the academic side. I don't always have to teach it, but I get to brush up on my math skills. I'm saying, Scott, I need you sometimes there. The, it's, it's been, it's been a good thing. The, it's, it's been, it's been a good thing for me. And sometimes these kids, when they hear math, you know, they just, ah, they just panic. And I tell them, no, you can do it. You can do it. And we work through it and have teachers that help them. We go extra. And, and, and it's, it's good. Here's how they come to school sometimes. That's a good deal. I have shoes in my room. I have clothes in my room. If not, we have a, a little grant through one of the counselors. We get shoes. We have them donated to us. It is amazing what these kids come to school in or don't come to school in because they don't have. This is one of the coolest things we ever did. It's called Future Now Finance. What we do is take a life scenario, give it to these kids and say, here's your yearly salary. You get to go live. And we send them around to all these booths, like this one says utilities. They're mandated to, to buy, have, pay for their bills, all that. One story about this, this girl comes up and, and she had children in the scenario. She comes up to me and says, Mr. Justin, I need to sell my baby. And I said, what are you talking about? You can't sell your baby? And she goes, no. She goes, I don't have enough money to live. I'm gonna have to sell my baby. And I said, well, we'll work something out. You can't, you know, that's not what we do. And so we send them over to the, the person's working in finances and somebody like Janelle and, and helps them out. So this, these kids said this is one of the best things that they ever did to learn how to live. So it's really a neat deal. And they do this at all, at, at most communities and schools, branches at networks. This is one of my harebrained ideas and it has worked really well. This is called Lunch with Mr. Just. How novel, huh? They come and what did I get? They, they ate lunch with me. That's all I have them do is just eat lunch with me. Once in a while I might tell them a joke, but that's free. So anyway, they come, they eat lunch, they have fun, they get away from the hustle and bustle. They love it. I have to, sometimes I have to draw like a lottery system to see who gets to eat lunch with me this week because so many kids want to do that. And I just did a report on it and I had, I believe, nine, no, it was 86 kids this last month eat lunch with me. They, they love it. Working with some food, we have a backpack food program that we send out or this year I delivered because of, of course, COVID. And this, the, the food packs come from the Kansas Food Bank and we partner with them. And it, uh, we give it out to needy families and it's, it's a neat deal. It's, it's a great thing. This is one of my great lessons in tie tying. This boy had pictures. They didn't know who to call. Who? So they called, Mr. Just, you know how to tie a tie? Yeah. Well, we need you to come to the classroom. So in front of the classroom, I gave a tie tying, uh, little lesson. And I think I put it on here. Yeah, this was him. I said, you know what to do next? This is what he did. I don't know. You know, he had not a clue, of course, and kids don't know how to tie ties now anyway, but it was, it was fun. It was just, all the extra things I do. This is when we were home, working from the home. And I thought I should really be in, you know, in, in the scope of things. So if you notice my mask said, uh, mushroom hunt because I had no Morels. Anyway, uh, I'll, I'll explain that to you if you didn't get it later. But we, we had the course go with it. We had to go with, I supplied a lot of water bottles, face masks, gloves, hand cleaner, all of that this year too, just like everybody else did. But it's something we rolled with and it was a deal. But, uh, I think we may be past the worst part, hopefully. Getting towards the end here, this is the I'm Not Bored Board. I let the kids come in. They love to draw on the board. They'll fight over who gets to draw first. And one of the things, the whole goal from this was to let them have fun and relax a little bit, but also to maybe tell what's going on, what their feelings are. And sure enough, this kid, can you see what he says? Can anybody read that?
Depression.
Yeah, depression controls you like a robot. He wasn't gonna tell me, this was a boy. He wasn't gonna tell me he had depression, but he wrote it on the board. So I got to help him and we got to see that he got the help he needed. I won't put the video on or the, uh, yeah, the video on here, but I, I sent a little video out to encourage the kids as they ended the year and we're, we're doing things. So anyway, just to keep it a little light. And this was a little feedback that I get from the students. We have, many of us have a relationship that it, it works. And that's what brings kids about because if they're happier and they have a relationship with somebody and they see somebody cares, they know that they can go to us for help. We can assist them in their schoolwork or whatever else they need. And, uh, it's, it's because of, of people like you and your efforts and the, uh, extra partnership. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. I appreciate what y'all do. Anything else on this, Tabitha?
So if you look at your agenda, sorry, I'm trying to get back to my.
That's right. I can talk about it. So we, we received, um, $37,000, $37,500 in requests. Um, our sale, our liquor tax revenue this year was around $20,000. So we've set some allocations, our staff's recommended some allocations. Um, and I would take a motion from one of the commissioners to set those allocations.
I move to allocate the liquor tax monies in the following manner and to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the following recipients. And that these funds are dis- dispersed consistent with Kansas statutes. Family Life Center, $11,063. Scarf, $5,636. And Community and Schools, $4,175.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'd just like to make some clarifications as these amounts kind of vary each year a little bit. And we know that your requests are important and we want to fund as much as we can. Um, those amounts fund every penny of liquor tax money that we receive this year. So, uh, to be allocated out. So I appreciate the work you all do and, and, uh, we'll, we, we will help as much as we can when we can. So.
So, so that number is down 25,000 this year?
Or 20,000?
What number are you looking at?
The, the overall number.
No, um, we're down a couple thousand in what we collected, but the amount requested is down quite a bit.
Oh, okay.
Because, um.
So we had 48,000 in requests and we, and we.
Last year and, and this year we have, we have 37,000.
How much money did we put out last year, do you know?
Twenty, uh, no, sorry. Last year we put out the 37,000. We, we less allocated more than what we had last year.
Okay. So we pulled that out of?
There was, there was a.
Oh, there was some, there was some excess in there. We spent it all last year.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, I'm just trying to, the liquor sales were down or not?
I think it was.
That's why I was wondering, did it go in half this year?
Liquor sales didn't go down soon, right? But I just thought I would ask. Good question though. Comic relief for tonight. Okay, uh, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Again, we appreciate the work that, uh, that you guys do. Next item on the agenda, agenda item number 13, Commission Pay Charter Ordinance.
Commissioner, uh, based on some conversation that we've had over the last couple of state sessions, uh, we have charter ordinance. But we have charter ordinance prepared for you for consideration that would increase the commission pay. Uh, right now, the state commission receives a hundred dollars a year, uh, paid twice a year. So fifty dollars, fifty, no, sorry, a hundred dollars a year paid in June or July. Um, based on the number of our neighboring communities, which we provided that commission to, the commission asked that we prepare a charter ordinance. Excuse me, that would increase commission pay, um, $2,000 for the mayor and $500 per year for each commissioner. We have done that. And this will become effective, um, for the commission following the election in Jan- on January. So the ordinance will come effect January 1st, 2022. Um, unless it's not passed until tonight. Or unless a sufficient petition for a referendum is fired, filed requiring a referendum to be held on the ordinance provided by state law. So if there's any questions on that, we'll take those.
Do we, uh, so just to clarify again for every, for the lots of people watching out there, this, this is not, uh, this is not something that takes effect during this session or during, during this election session. So after the election, um, January is when it takes effect. So we're not voting ourselves a raise. We gotta, we gotta run and get elected. So. Any other questions for David?
You might, might express the fact that we spent quite a bit of time debating this issue in work session. This wasn't something that just appears tonight for us to vote on. That we compared other cities and what they do. Talked about what El Dorado does and then came up with, uh, the ordinance presented this evening.
Do we have, um, do we have a motion?
Your turn.
You're gonna make me make the motion? Really?
Really.
It's gotta be one of you.
I'm starting throwing stuff at you, Kendra. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve char- charter ordinance number 27. An ordinance exempting the City of El Dorado, Kansas from terms and provisions of Section 12, 1005A and 121006 and 121007, Kansas statutes annotated, providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to compensation and repealing charter ordinance number six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. This is a charter ordinance, so we need a roll call vote, please.
I, I wanted to want to say one thing.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't ask for discussion. I apologize.
I mean, and I'm, I have, I have, I, I have a tough issue with this one. But I also know that the two people that are he- that aren't here are fully supportive of, of this. I, I, walking in today, I was gonna say no because I thought it'd be all five of us. There's no reason to kick it down the curb in two weeks. So, um, I'm gonna vote yes tonight because I know that it would pass no matter what, if we had a full, if we had a full bench. Um, and I don't want it to, I don't, I, I just, there's no reason to kick, to, to drag it on because I know what the end result's gonna be. But in, in the end, I was gonna vote, if we had a full bench, no on this because I, I'm, I'm not a big fan of it. But for expediency, I will vote yes tonight.
I appreciate that. I apologize for not asking for discussion. But I, I, and I do appreciate that. And to the point that there was the Kendra made and that Matt just made. We have been talking about this for a while, um, in work sessions. We've had, the staff has provided a lot of information to us. Um, and this was, you know, I think each commissioner, and, and Kendra may speak to it as well. Um, each commissioner, um, has kind of their own reasoning. Um, one of the challenges is, eh, from my perspective is, um, you know, there's, there's a part of me that hopes that, that a little bit of compensation would help get, um, other people to want to be involved up here and wanna, wanna run for these positions. We've all ran unopposed at these seats up here at one point or another in our career and, and, uh, I don't know that the amount that we've set is generally a life-changing amount for anyone, but, you know, hopefully it's a little bit of an incentive. From my perspective, that's it. Plus, we also do spend an enormous amount of time doing the work that we do. That being said, all of us ran knowing that we were getting paid a hundred dollars a year. So. So if, is there any other discussion? Roll call, please, Tabitha.
Commissioner Badway is absent. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Lewis is also absent.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, agenda item number 14, the transient guest tax charter ordinance.
Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner, um, we submitted the transient guest tax charter ordinance that was passed last year through the State of Kansas for, um, approval. And they sent it back to us. The State of Kansas changed the law, uh, regarding how many, um, bedrooms a place had to have in order to pay, um, transient guest tax. It went from eight to two. And so we needed to change that in our charter ordinance. It was, uh, mainly to catch, uh, the, um, the, what's the?
Air.
Airbnbs.
Airbnb's.
Um, those kinds of things. And so, uh, we just needed to change our ordinance to reflect that because they're only quoting the old statute.
Said eight originally, and the one that we, I was gonna say, I thought we'd already done this once.
Yeah, this, this just brings it in line with the.
So we will, if, uh, redoing this ordinance date will give us looks at the right definition and we will rescind it. And that will going to affect how much a lot first this year.
So aside, I'm sorry.
It's the same date that we had for the original. So it's gonna be, okay.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, I move to approve charter ordinance number 28. The charter ordinance exempting the City of El Dorado, Kansas from KSA Section 12 dash 1692, 12 dash 1697, and 12 dash 1698, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject and repealing char- charter ordinance number 25.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Agenda item number 15, project number 560, Sanitary Sewer South Aberhill Public Hearing. We are going to hold or open, let's just open a public hearing for project number 560. So do we need to give any information on the project before we open the hearing? Would you like to just kind of let us know real quick?
Yeah, project 560 was the extension of the sewer line to serve, um, the 600, 700 block of South Aberhill Road. So that would be the old AAA lumber building, um, the vacant lot there to the north. And one residence that was, um, on septic as well as AAA lumber's building. The Public Utilities Department did the work. They did the, uh, extension of the sewer line. So the total project cost came in at $5,519.73. That will be divided over those three properties. And then spread as an assessment on our property taxes.
All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to participate in the public hearing? Seeing that there is none, we'll close the public hearing. And I would take a motion.
Um, was this initiated by the residents? Or was this part of just a master plan of, of making it happen?
This was something, um, originally AAA had requested this when they were in operation. Then went out. There was no real need at that time. There wasn't a failing septic system over there. The residents of 605 South Aberhill Road, um, had moved in, didn't realize he was on septic, had issues. So it was, it was an emergency project that we created to go ahead and get them tied in the state sewer.
So 605 is north, north of, now, did, did it get all the way to Ace Hardware? Did Ace, or not Ace, um, Napa?
Napa was already sewn.
Coming from the other direction. Section there. There's just one, like, we just left out of sewer.
You know, originally that being in the county, they were accepting, the sewer wasn't available.
Gotcha, okay.
Where Napa is today, there's a sewer line for quite a while. So they had always been tied on since that building was originally built.
Okay. All right, that's all I got. Sorry. Do you have a motion? I move to approve ordinance number 1348 and ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by Resolution Number 2898 of the city. as previously authorized by resolution number 2898 of the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 16, District 142, closeout public hearing.
It's just a procedural item, they have closed out the project and authorized the mayor to sign all the required documents to do such. Phase one, which we spoke about last meeting ago, they, they went to apply for a phase two. Phase one was waterproofing the basement, fire suppression system, and new roof. Total project costs that were included in this part of the grant were $336,679. Grant funds received and funneled through the city to the building owner, $247,950. The owner of the property then paid the remaining $88,729.62 out of his pocket. There was no city cost on this project.
Perfect, so I'd like to open the public hearing for, to close out, for the closeout documents for phase one CDBG project at 142 North Main. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Seeing that there are none, we'll close the public hearing, and I would take a motion.
I move to close out the phase one CDBG project at 142 North Main Street, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents required of the grant.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 17, the Black and Beach Professional Services Agreement for the water, for water capacity and treatment study.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an agreement before you tonight, asking you to consider authorizing the city manager into entering into agreement with Black and Beach Engineering to do a water master plan for the city of El Dorado. What the scope of this study is, is looking at our existing treatment facility, reviewing what we have there to date, and then come up with treatment expansion alternatives. And what we want to understand is triggers, so if we get a user that comes in and requests an additional 3 million gallons of water a day, we have an understanding of what that cost is, and be able to have a good idea to be able to quote the cost per thousand gallons of water to prospects. So that's, that's one part, the big focus on our treatment facility and reviewing it. The last time the treatment plant was expanded was in 1998. Currently today, we have about 1 million gallons of freeboard, so expansion ability within our plant at our peak flows. So that moves us into the next phase of this project, and that's our distribution system. We may have that freeboard that reserve, but the problem we experience is getting it out of the plants. So the trunk system, as you, as you might envision it, leaving the plant and getting out into the city, and then our other big water users, the little water districts. So this would do a modeling, a GIS modeling of our entire distribution system, to see where future needs may be, where we experienced low water pressures today, future projects, and then also routing of a transmission main to serve our industrial parks that we're currently marketing, investigating sites for future water tower placement. So pretty hot, all encompassing master plan of our water utility and our water treatment facility. We're anticipating that this final plan would be completed in November of 2021, so this year. They'll come and propose to give a report to you all on that. It's something that will really help staff in marketing our available land, and our private land that we are marketing for available industrial prospects. It'll also help the Utilities Department plan in future CIP projects. We know today we have pressure issues in the northeast part of El Dorado. Well, could a transmission main expansion help that side of town at a lesser cost of putting in pump stations, or, or different pressure zones? It'll help us get a grasp of future needs, so future existing customers and their growth potential, and how we can get that water out of the plant more, in, in a better manner. One thing I think the staff really likes is evaluate our existing plant, it works well, it, it does well for us, and it makes good water, but how can we capitalize on that existing plants, and the existing conventional treatment that we do to that water, and maybe make a little bit more water flow through, without going to the large expense of expanding a plant, adding additional basins for water treatment, looking at different ideas from going to membrane filtration. Plant's over 80 years old, but it, it's in really good shape, and the guys do a good job maintaining it. So that was of the interest of them as well, let's look at what we got today, how can we better utilize it? What technologies are out there that we can utilize on a monfire existing plant before a certain trigger requires expansion? Black and Beach is, is estimating a not-to-exceed price of $189,980 for the study. That's, the study is estimated for right over 1,000 man-hours for their personnel to work on. It'll take a lot of, lot of staff's, utilities, my staff's time as well, but we think it's a worthwhile venture to go through. And we haven't looked at anything this in-depth in a long, long, long time, so it's been individualized, targeted projects.
Well, thank you for explaining that part to me, because I was, if it was just for economic development, I, I wouldn't have voted for it, but since it's, I understand it a little bit better before it's even, it started out, me thinking that this was for more economic development for out there, and you're saying that you guys could use it for internal improvements, that's, thank you, that helped me.
Thank you for the, the information as well, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Black and Beach for the purposes of creating an El Dorado water master plan.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 18, Garver Professional Services Agreement for the sanitary sewer master plan project.
Yeah, very, very similar, so same, same dynamic as, as a water master plan, looking at industrial development, how do we get to it, look in our existing collection system. In 2004, there was a sewer plant done, but it's specifically focused on the northeast part of El Dorado, because that's where we could have the most potential to grow residentially. That's where the land is, that could be residential in nature. We're pretty, to the east, we have floodplains and rivers, to the south, the refinery, to the west, you get past the turnpike, very heavy oil, oil fields. Our collection system as a whole, its capacity hasn't been expanded since 1979. So these are the large lines that carry the sewer, to our sewer treatment plant. We have a lot of INI, so that's inflow infiltration, when it's very wet, it rains a lot. We can see flows at our water, at our wastewater treatment facility, that are normally 2 million gallons a day, tick up to almost 10 million gallons at times, and then they go back on down after things dry up. So that's a lot of excess water that's needed to go through the treatment process, the wet ones, and it's a lot of excess water that takes capacity away for our future growth. So part of this study would be looking at our existing collection system, so the sewer mains within our town. This phase would specifically focus on the large interceptors, so the ones that carry multiple neighborhoods on down the line. And checking the assessment of those, staff would be doing flow, flow monitoring, so we would wanna catch rain events, see how much the, the flow increases because of rain water versus just the normal flow. So it would be a model that we would be able to utilize in the future, as well as create CIP projects for the future. But we also know if we grow, and if we grow industrially in the west, and we're gonna have to start planning, how are we getting sewer to our wastewater treatment facility on a collection system that's already taxed, taxed in those areas? Garver has proposed a fee of $70,793, as the same as a Black and Beach prior, this is a not-to-exceed, so we will be billed the actual hours not to exceed this dollar.
And date expected?
In 2021 as well, before that, change to 2022.
So are you thinking that, like, your department's gonna be pretty heavily involved in this?
So the last one that we did, that we focused on the northeast part of town, we did all of the data collection, and we, we just need to work with public utilities on these, if they have staff available at the time, go out, put that in, or, or my guys, or whatever. Definitely we'll have to push all of our historical data we have to them, our existing GIS, and then they'll manipulate that and be able to give us a new model.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Garver for the purpose of creating an El Dorado sewer master plan.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. That's the end of our new business, we've got a discussion item tonight, and item number 14 on the agenda, 19 on the agenda, is the July 4 fireworks location.
So we have found out that on July 3, the Broncos will be playing at home, so if you guys would to kind of wait and see if they're gonna have a game, they have a game on the 3rd, and I believe the 3rd is Saturday, 4th is a Sunday, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you wanted to, we could do the fireworks like we did last year at the stadium with the baseball game, so we bring that to you for discussion, so we can make a decision there.
Shoot off the fireworks on the 3rd?
Or you can shoot them off on the Sunday, but they didn't play on the Sunday.
We've done it on a day, on a different day before, I think the plan right now, and for me, I'm not speaking, but I believe that the celebration that we normally have would be held on Saturday as well, because we wouldn't wanna interfere with church on Sunday, and so this would just wrap up the day like normal, but we could, I mean, we can wait the fireworks the day after, it's just...
So it's not unheard of to do it on the...
Oh, no, we've done, we've done, I know that we've done the, I, I was, I was thinking about that for the fireworks as well, but I know that we've done the 4th of July events on Saturday, you know, even when the 4th was either on a Friday or a Sunday, because, you know, it's an all, it's all day, so. That way, we're, that way at least the city's not blowing up fireworks late at night when people gotta try to get up to go to work the next morning.
Well, and they will.
For the city.
They will on Sunday, yeah.
I'm saying the city, like us. I mean, I will.
Yeah.
I will at home, but not city-sponsored.
See how long we can drag these fireworks out.
We can work on that too, if you'd like.
I, I like, I like the baseball stadium, and I'm, and I like, and I'm, I'm okay with moving it to Saturday, and just call it the 3rd our official 4th of July celebration.
Now, is the 150th doing anything special around the 4th?
That's, I think that's that Saturday, but they meet next week, so.
At this time, I believe that Holly Frontier will be sponsoring one of our 150 events, and theirs will be the week following the 4th, so theirs will go for five days after the 4th of July.
Generally speaking, the, the 4th of July weekend for the Broncos, and I, again, at post-COVID here, I'm not sure, but historically, they've had their, that's been their family weekend, so the, the players' families try to come in, it's also their celebration of veterans that, on the 3rd as well, they generally do their, the Celebration of Freedom group helps with that. It's kind of how the weekend usually goes for, for 4th of July with the Broncos. So I'm, I've always have been in favor of having it at, at, at MAC Stadium, I think it's a great venue for it, those people that are there watching the ballgame get to sit in the stands, the parking lot fills up with people, it's, it's, I've said this before up here as a commissioner and as, as mayor, that it, it really fills my heart to see that many people down there, and that type of community, as we...
Kids love to sit on the outfield and the infield, and...
Yeah, so great opportunity.
Run the bases.
Baseball and fireworks.
It's America.
America.
So I, I think you've, general consensus that Saturday would be good?
Yes.
Is that all you need, David?
That's it.
Okay, so we're on to agenda item number 20, City Commission Advisory Board Updates, we will start with Commissioner Wilkinson.
Parks and Rec meets tomorrow night for a special session.
Okay.
And they're meeting over the, the Y?
Y.
The Y presentation. How does that committee feel? I mean, what, what's the temperature?
The committee, the rec board has not made any decision, they want to get results back from the survey that we are going to be given tomorrow night, and the city has set two separate dates for community input, and, I mean, the, the rec board's open-minded, but they wanna know what the public feel, how the public feels about it.
And the Y will be part of those forums also?
Well, yeah, because the Y will have to explain what's different about their program as opposed to a rec program. Because the Y is going to have like recreation level, intermediate level, and advanced level in the sports, whereas the recreation department has recreation level. So, yeah, the Y, I, am I, I'm not speaking out of turn on that, am I? Okay, yes, the Y will be there to present what they have to offer. Something off of the topic of, of the agenda, I like the fact that in our notebook, you have put the strategic plan that all of these fit under, to remind us that we are sticking with our plan, and under what area it belongs in. I appreciate that, thank you. Okay.
Commissioner Guthrie? Couple things, we, I, the Destinations Position got hired, so we, we have someone that'll be spearheading CTC and that, so I'm, I'm excited to meet him and get to work with him. The jet ski races have been officially set for the 28th and 29th of August, so that's, that's coming up this summer. I'm organizing some days out at the lake to trim up some shoreline, so we can open up a couple of those coves, and it kind of brought something that I'd, I'd like to see as pursue, I'd like to propose an El Dorado Cup. Cup is given to our nonprofit organizations in town that does the most volunteering, whether it's city property, I mean, like, I mean, we, I, we've set a thing of, you know, where they get points and whatnot, but we, it kind of gives some sort of inspiration for our, the Elks, the Masons, the church groups, and whatnot, to participate in, and kind of start a competition. to participate in and kind of start a competition, like, we're trying to spur competition with us. I'd like to see it with our nonprofits also, and then at the end of the year, you know, we present the El Dorado Cup to whatever organization they have it for a year, like the Stanley Cup. Then we present it again the next year. I think something to, to inspire these groups to, to get out and to do things, you know, I, I don't know, maybe more points for doing stuff on city property, but, you know, painting houses and whatnot, I know there's a bunch of groups out there that are looking for stuff to do, and this might help. I don't know, just want to throw it out there.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea at all, I mean, I think, I mean, unless Kendra objects, I'd, I'd love to see you, I'd love to see you kind of write up a summary so that when the other two commissioners are here, we can talk about this in a work session. So, I think it's great, I, I, all of us in our lives and all the people out here today, all of you, you two specifically have spent a lot of time trying to find opportunities to serve your community. All of us have spent time, and we know that we've got some great organizations in El Dorado that want to, that, that want to continue finding more and more ways to, to serve our community. And if we can, you know, create, or inspire, to your point, inspire those groups to perform community service or targeted community service, I think that might benefit. So, I'd write it up, and we'll talk to the rest of the, the whole commission, I would, maybe one of the next work sessions, we'll get, get it on the schedule.
I just think it, I, it's just something to be unique to us.
Sue me, it's a traveling cup?
Yeah, like the Stanley Cup.
Yeah, but it just has the little...
Just has a little plaque on it, we just add on, you know?
But it's a giant cup that you can drink champagne in.
I want a big boy, yeah.
I, I understand that, you don't do anything small.
I do know.
No, uh-uh.
Thank you, man, I appreciate it.
Eight by ten.
Just a plaque.
Plaque to hang on the wall.
A six by ten plaque.
I think it's a good idea, yeah, put it together. I mean, I, I think, I think the other commissioners would love to hear about it, and I think it's, we can have our, our marketing people put, uh, put some, put some oomph behind it, see what we can do.
Yeah, see what we can do. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
So, the only thing that I wanted to talk about was, we, at a previous meeting, we talked a little bit about our EFABC contract, I just want to update you guys and let you know that we've got a EFABC meeting coming up on Thursday, the eighth, so just want to let you know that we'll be coming back from that. So, at the next meeting, we'll have some updates from that. I have no updates today.
Okay, right. Well, I, I'm...
Be scheduled for the city. No, go on, tell me.
No, I'm, I'm talking to you too, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I know you're both on that committee. One thing, like, and I talked to the mayor about it a couple of weeks ago, but I personally feel that Nick has some valid points with what he want, what, what he, that his push. And with the way that the EFABC reacted and their, their knee-jerk of how, you know, how important that we are, I want him, I, I, I want you guys to push them in the fact that we need to be able to use it for our purposes also. And that, and that truly is important, that, yes, they've got a nice football stadium, yes, they have a nice soccer stadium, they have a nice track, but we have to be able to use it also. And I think that through this process, we've shown, and then in their, in their response to us and whatnot, that's not a priority to them. And I, and I really do feel like, with the way that they presented themselves and the way that they, you know, how, how important we are to this whole process, our needs need to be met also. And I just want to, I just want to, in, in, express that upon you two, that you are our representatives, that I would like that to be presented to them also, and the fact that they, this isn't a done deal.
Oh, no, no.
This, this isn't over just because they, they sent out a false email and told these people something I don't think was true. That's the conversations I've had, but that's here nor there. They need, they, our needs need to be met also, if we're gonna continue.
I, I think the idea has come up that the city should maybe develop their own list of, if you want to rent it on city time, or, you know, under the flag of the city, and this is what you want, and not necessarily deal with only their fee schedule.
Well, I, I think...
You know, we have a fee schedule for the Civic Center, for the Depot, and all these things.
I, but I, I think that even if, even if we wanted to rent it, we couldn't do concerts, okay? We can't do certain things with the property which was sold to, to the commission at that point, things that we can do. And again, I don't feel like, up until now, they've really cared that, that we can't use it.
Do you think they care now?
I, well, they, they seem to think, they, the, the way that, that Ray and everybody presented themselves is, is that, in the letters, is that, you know, that we're important to this whole thing. And, no, I really don't feel that way, but I think we need to be asking for it, I guess, as our representatives. It needs to be part of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I've got, city manager, report.
Well, as Commissioner Wilkinson mentioned, Park Advisory Board meeting tomorrow to discuss, we're gonna discuss the survey instrument for the finances proposal and over the planned public forums. Those forums will take place at the Center on April twenty-second at six-thirty, and then again at April, on April twenty-seventh at five-thirty PM. So, if folks are interested in attending either of those two forums, they may do so. And then, when the survey instrument is complete, we will get that available for the public. And then, the deadline to return the surveys will be five PM on May third, right here at City Hall. And then, that way, the Park Advisor, we can, staff can tabulate the results, and they can be presented to the Park Advisory Board at their May nineteenth meeting, so that they can begin discussing recommendation for you all to discuss. Sales tax receipts for March came in pretty healthy, two-hundred-twenty thousand six-hundred-eighty-six dollars, based on twenty-two-point-eight million dollars in retail sales occurring in January. The year-to-date, the city's brought in seven, little, little over seven-hundred thousand dollars, which is six-point-four percent more than the same period a year ago. Based on these numbers in their twelve month, or the twelve trailing months, we are projected to bring in two-point-seven million dollars, which would be the new sales tax record if that continues. So, shop local and shop often, we appreciate it.
We like setting records.
That's right. Coed T-Balls now looking for registration, the Parks and Recreation Department. Participants must be five or six years of age during this school year, so no four-year-olds for Coed T-Ball. Registration deadline is April sixteenth. The Recreation Department is also hosting the annual Pitch Hit and Run contest on April twelfth at McDelitt Stadium. Boys and girls between the ages of seven and fourteen, as of July seventeenth of this year, may enter to participate in the free event. Register at www.pitchhitandrun.com, or call City Hall for more information, that's three-two-one-nine-one-hundred. The city plans to replace the north fence at the city's dog park this week. The project will take approximately three days, should be completed by the end of the week, pending any weather delays, of course. The city placed a temporary fence until the project is completed, but please use caution when visiting the park with your dogs, you don't want to get hurt. The city of El Dorado is also hosting a spring photo contest for April thirtieth. So, if you have any real good spring pictures, we encourage you to capture those and send us a copy of them via email, photocontest@eldoks.com. It says in submit the online form, I'm not exactly sure what that means, but email your photos to photocontest@eldoks.com so that you can be entered and you could be, you could be included in next year's calendar, as well as some other fun promotional stuff that we will be doing throughout the, for, for next year. The one-hundred-fiftieth is this year, and so we, the city, had, had ordered some one-hundred-fiftieth challenge coins. We've been hiding those throughout town in various spots, so keep your eyes open if you find one. We ask that you share that on Facebook or one of our socials and tag the city so we know which one you picked up, and so that we can continue to promote the fun semi-schaggy hunt to celebrate the one-hundred-fiftieth. City's dump truck program is starting this month and ending October fourteenth, so you have plenty of time to get a dump truck delivered to your house. Contact Public Works Department for more information or make a reservation, that's three-two-two-four-four-eight-one, so you can get your spring cleaning needs taken care of. And then, beginning, or during the week of April fourth, I'm sorry, April nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, you can drop off your household trash at the east side of the Public Works Department, which is located at two-two-two East Second Street, Monday through Fridays from seven AM to five PM, and then Saturday from eight AM to two PM. Pickup will not be provided during the spring cleanup, we only do that during the fall. Visit the city's website or call three-two-two-four-four-eight-one for more information. Finally, the chamber's hosting their annual mayor's prayer breakfast on May sixth at seven AM at the Civic Center. Tickets are twelve dollars. Please call the Chamber of Commerce for more information or reserve your ticket.
Thank you, David. So, just to kind of give a, a quick rundown of what the rest of the meeting's gonna look like, we have two executive sessions tonight, we've added one, we've got one executive session with our city attorney to talk about some client, attorney-client privileged information, and then we will come back from that, and we'll convene into another executive session to discuss non-elected personnel and succession plans. Then when we come back from that, we will be adjourning the meeting, and then we will call to order, after we've adjourned this meeting, we'll call to order the El Dorado Land Bank Board of Trustees meeting, which is this group, but it's a separate meeting, so. Just wanted to let everyone know kind of where we're at for the night. So, do I have a motion for the attorney-client privileged executive session, which I think Kendra has?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session pursuant to attorney-client privilege exception under KSA seven-five-dash-four-three-one-nine-B-two for the purpose of discussing legal issues and to reconvene the meeting at...
How much time do we need to?
Probably like, fuck, ten minutes.
So, eight o'clock, good?
Eight o'clock, be fine.
That'll work.
Eight o'clock, in the city commission room.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.
Be right back.
Okay, so we're back from our final executive session, and I would consider a motion to adjourn this regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to call to order the April 5th, 2021, meeting of the Eldorado Land Bank Board of Trustees. Roll call, Tabitha.
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner McCaffrey.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Bywell. I'm Senator Williams.
Present.
There's nothing on the consent agenda. There's no old business. There's new business, acquisition of 307 South Agitson to the Eldorado Land Bank.
Yes, this is one of the properties that we condemned earlier this fall. The Public Works Department demolished the structure on the property. The owner of the property is asking to quitclaim deed that property to the Eldorado Land Bank. At no cost. The property currently has the link with taxes in the amount of sixteen hundred and sixteen dollars and seven cents. Cities anticipate cost, or land bank's cost and time of work publication, so far has been four hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. And Public Works demolition of the property was eleven thousand twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. So those, that special assessment for the demolition would have been added to the property. The property hasn't paid taxes since 2016, so it was very high potential. It would soon go up to other county sheriff's sale. At that time, our building demolition fund would have lost any chance to reclaim that demolition cost, more than likely. The way those sales go, the county pays itself first, and then the taxideries in line, and then special assessments are the last time. The demolition cost on there is high because on these condemned structures, we do not own the land. We wanted to capture personnel expenses, equipment expenses, and time. Had we owned this property prior, you know, we would have just had the cost of the landfill. So we do that, we do that if it's a condemned structure that we do not own, because we want to capture the taxpayers' investment for the time.
So any, I'm just curious, any house that we would demolish, it's about eleven grand? That's, looks like an average-sized house. It doesn't look very...
They all range, and honestly, the biggest thing, and Brian was here to kind of tell you, is the amount of stuff in the house. You know, the walls, the roof doesn't add much volume.
Right.
It's the amount of stuff that's up on it.
Because we demolished houses like private when we farmed it out, and some of it was like five or six, and they were average, I mean, okay. And do we have any land in this area? Would this be the first house, only house in this area that we have land?
This would be, correct.
Correct.
And the benefit of having the Eldorado Land Bank acquire the property is that we would not be liable for those taxes. Prior to the creation of Land Bank, if there was a property like this, we wanted to acquire, at closing, we'd have to pay for the past two taxes.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to acquire 307 South Agitson on behalf of the Eldorado Land Bank.
Second. Motion is second. There's no further discussion. Since we're in a land bank meeting, when would we expect bylaws and whatnot for the land bank?
So we're actually working on those internally. We hope to have them ready for the next work session, but we're trying to get them all ironed out.
I just, I was just curious. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would now consider a motion to adjourn the April 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Have a safe night.